I called him last night. I did return the call.
Hey, Susan.
And what do you say? You know? I just felt it was kinda simple.
It's really not rocket science.
No, it's really... So it was one of them, you know? I said, "I guess I could've said it in a more polite way." But the bottom line is still the same.
Yeah.
So when the book conversation was over, he says, "You know something?" He says, "Anybody comes up in the conversation and says, 'I will definitely tell them the man called me back, talked with me about it,' and he says, 'Actually, I'm a little surprised that even heard from him.'"
That's pretty neat. It's pretty neat. It's cool when you're part of friends. See, now, I had a guy write me just the angriest letter about the town. But he left me contact info, so I called him up. I said, "Sir, if you're available, come on over to my house. I want you to see all this." I can literally let him read it for a bit, then missed it with it. Now we talk about it every four hours. It's okay. Pretty cool.
Yep.
Addy.
Addy.
Oh, no, she's taking this. Now, this is fine, I guess.
I'm comfortable.
All right, babe.
Do you have all this material? Did you want this stuff for yours more? Make sure I understand.
Yeah, I wanted it back eventually, but...
My name is... You're gonna be an Indian giver?
Although I'm not. I've been there twenty-six years. I've just shouted to you. But, yeah. A Native American gives it to you.
He bought a seminar class yesterday. Did you drop a three-quarter ton or one ton?
Okay, then we should be okay. We are taking... Okay. Somebody sent me Arizona's Most Redneck Towns website. Did you see that?
Even if it isn't?
Yes.
It's probably like this.
He probably won't use it, but my wife thought it was funny. We can go ahead and light the fuse on this, and then if Vice Mayor Croft shows up, we can... Oh, he's doing Citizens Academy? Okay. And Councilman Bestis?
I didn't hear from those. He's in Long Beach.
Okay, easy enough. Let's go ahead and fire... Wanna show this off? Mr. Mike Sturdy, one of our craftsmen from here in Chino. He won some kinda ribbon for it. I think it's black walnut and holly. Anyway, he made that for me. So then he had to borrow it back to enter it in the woodworking show. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a study session. May we have the roll call?
Yes, may. Councilmember Chuga. Here. Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Yeller.
Present.
Councilmember Rosa.
Here.
And absent is Councilmember Best and Vice Mayor Croft. And Mayor Marley?
Okay. Here. All right. First order of business is a presentation and discussion regarding USDA Wi-Fi refinance, Center Street sewer extension, town's water and sewer extension, buy-in fee and connection policies. Robert Smith, town manager. Before you begin, Robert, I just wanted to do a quick preface for the council, if that's okay. Tonight's study session will have both an educational component and a discussion component. This is our first study session for some of our new council members. Feel free to ask questions. It's a very relaxed atmosphere. As a study session, we can make no decisions, but hopefully we'll come away a little bit better informed, and then hopefully this'll lead to an action at a later council meeting, okay? Before we begin, I wanted to set forth a couple of goals, but I'm hoping that we can accomplish, not necessarily tonight, but over the next few weeks or months. Instead of making a set of rules for just the Center Street project, I'm hoping that we can have the council perfect and adopt a more comprehensive ordinance that addresses not only projects like Molly Ray, but the rest of the sewer system as well. The reason I say that is, as a town, we've had a reputation of making up the rules as we go along. And Molly Ray, if we just make rules for Molly Ray, there's a good chance it'll be perceived in the same light. Oh, yeah, you made just a set of rules for just these people. And if we can... I'm hoping we can delay construction for a month or two on the Molly Ray project while we hammer out a workable sewer policy, and then hopefully we won't have to deal with it again. If we do have to do it in two bites, then we have to. I can live with that. But I think it's gonna be better for the people of the town to see that the council is making one set of rules, and you know what those rules are going forward. So with that being said, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor Marley. Thank you, council, for your time this evening. We hope to get through the USDA refi, as well as the sewer extension project, and necessary connections, mandatory connections, and thoughts about that. I don't know if council all remembers, but we have an opportunity to refinance some of the town's debt, and in doing so, eliminate some of the interest that the town would pay on some of its older debt. And in order to do that, we would be required by WIFA to borrow a certain amount of money. We believe that money would be well-spent in providing gravity service to the Molly Ray subdivision, since it's already plumbed for a gravity sewer. You're gonna hear from Joe this evening. He's provided some materials for you. And with that, I would turn the podium over to Joe.
Thank you, Mayor of council. Basically, I'll just wanna go over really quick the July 14th presentation that we did when we first introduced this to the mayor and council. And a little bit of background about WIFA and how the numbers are flowing for this project. So WIFA is... It stands for Water Infrastructure Finance Authority of Arizona. And basically, they're funded by EPA, who funds them, basically money into their account, and they're able to leverage that money and loan out to all the communities, and water districts and electrical districts and stuff throughout the state. So a lot of communities use WIFA. Just about every community that I know of has borrowed some money at some time from WIFA to do projects. Mostly water and sewer. And they break up their loans. They have clean water loans and drinking water loans. And of course, clean water is wastewater. I don't know why they said that, but drinking water is potable water. The reason that Chino Valley likes it is, they also look at each community's demographics and cost of living and income levels, and they actually offer us a 20% subsidy on our interest rate. So wealthy communities not gonna get that, and there's poor communities that get a little bit more. Actually, I think the maximum is 25%. So they look at Chino Valley, and we get a 20% subsidy off the interest rate. They extend grants to underprivileged communities, the wastewater treatment plant. We basically... They call it forgiving principle, but essentially it's a grant. We save $478,000 to $479,000. And on the Prescott water acquisition, they've already allocated approximately $636,000. Could be a little bit more, might be a little bit less, but they told us this is a pretty safe number. WIFA allows borrowers to fund a reserve fund over five years. In traditional financing, when you go out and borrow money, you usually have to borrow the reserve fund, so you end up paying interest on it all that time. Well, WIFA allows you to fund it over one-fifth every to five years. And the reserve is usually one year's worth of debt service payments, typically. And they also encourage us to do a repair replacement fund. It's not mandatory, but the town of Chino Valley has been funding a repair replacement fund, putting money away so that if something major happens, like, and we're doing it with the wastewater system, if something major happens, at least we have a down payment. Or sometimes maybe we can pay for it without having to go out and borrow. So it's just smart money management that they encourage. Currently, we have three loans with WIFA. This is pretty much... The money was borrowed really to do Chino Meadows and all the distribution lines in it. So currently, we started out with $9.3 million, or about $9.4 million worth of debt. We're currently at $7.3. We have a reserve fund of $636,000, which is fully funded, or will be funded at the end of this fiscal year. And then we have a repair replacement fund where we have $268,000 funded. That money earns interest. It's in our bank account at the state treasurer's office, and just sitting there, and we just keep dropping it in. The USDA loan... Now, really what drove this whole thing is, we're paying 4.125% on these three USDA loans. They were... The money was used for the same purpose, for doing the Chino Meadows, pretty much the Chino Meadows. WIFA had also the sewer plant and other stuff into it, too. But this was the Chino Meadows subsidy. These are 30-year loans, and when they're taken out, that was a good interest rate. Well, now, the interest rate's closer to 2%, 2.25%. In fact, when we bought out the wastewater treatment plant, we got 2.01%. So the idea was, wow, you're gonna cut your interest rate almost in half. It's probably good financially to go ahead and do it. So we went to WIFA, and we said, "Well, what can we do?" And we're using the projection of 2.45% because the rate we actually get will depend on the market the day we go out and actually close the loan. Right now, as of Monday, the rate was like 2.3%. And we're thinking the rates are gonna stay about where they're at over the next 30 or 60 days. When we originally did this, we were hoping the rates would stay because, you know, everybody's talking about the Fed increasing and stuff. But it looks like the rates are gonna be right at that range. So what happens is, we have our existing debt on our existing loan for 23 years. We're gonna spend $5,961,000 to pay that debt off, to just cash out of pocket. If we refinance it at 2.45%, we're only gonna spend $5,190,000. So we have a $771,000 just in cash out of pocket over the term. And it's not a lot every year, but it's a significant savings. If you present value that back, the cost of the money today where it is in the future, it's $636,000 in savings. So if that's all this was, this would make perfect sense. It'd be slammed up, no big deal. Except, WIFA has a provision that we have to borrow new money. They can't just refinance. They have to have a new project to do it. And they gave us a guidance when we met with them, a round of $500,000 project is what they would look for refinancing a loan about this big. So that's where we came up... Ron came up with the Molly Ray sewer idea, with the dry... You know, connecting up to them. So that project, I think, as you know, is the design's 50, construction about 510, and closing cost of $10,000. And the debt service on that new loan will be about $717,000. So we take... The debt service on the $550,000 that we borrowed will be $717, total cash out of pocket to pay. So we take our original savings of $770,000, less the cost of the money, all the debt service payments to pay off that $560,000, that extra portion that we have, we have a net savings of $53,000. Now, the problem is, is when this... If the interest rates do tick up, that $53,000 is gonna disappear. So council, I need to make you aware that there's gonna be a point... Well, I think if rates are not gonna tick up that much. So it's probably gonna be that the net savings equals zero. So understand, the project is probably worth doing, even if our net savings, our net cash is zero because we still need a sewer extension to another 104 lots. But there's a potential that my cost is $20,000, $30,000 that we really won't know. So I mean, we're just waiting for the interest rates. If it gets out of hand as $50,000 or $75,000 or $100,000, we're gonna come back and tell you, "Man, it just didn't pencil. Let's don't do it." But there could be a risk that it could actually cost us a little bit and not just be a savings. As of today, that's not gonna happen, but I can't tell you... I can't predict the future 30 to 45 days from now.
Excuse me, Joe. Are you saying the WIFA loan is a variable finisher?
It's tied to market. It's tied to the 10-year note. And so it changes every Monday morning. They publish what their rates are, and so...
Have you been after you secured the loan?
Well, no, no. That's just that loan closing. The day we close the loan.
Once you...
Once we lock our rate in, it's our rate from that point forward.
Okay, God.
Yes, yeah. Very good question. So here's the Molly Ray subdivision. It has 106 lots. Four of them have been built and are in septic. We projected that if our 102 build at our current buy-in fee rate, then we'll generate $612,000 cash. Once they're on the system, though, they're gonna generate about $78,000 in annual revenue just at our current monthly fee. Now, we know that that 100... They're not gonna build out next year. We know that's over. Maybe hopefully it's 10-year timeframe. Who knows? We're just guessing. But it pretty much will cash flow the thing. The homes being built will actually pay for the sewer in time. Now, the town will have to pay the interest and the service cost, but eventually we're gonna get the cash flow back over time. And then one... The next question is, what do we do with the 28 homes? And that's on your map, the little boxes on your map. And how do we handle that? So that's the next part of the discussion. The loan summary is, basically, we have the new debt, the sewer line extension. There's about $75,000 in closing costs. Anytime you borrow money, whether it's a million or 10 million, you're looking at $75,000 to $100,000 in closing costs. That's our bond council fee, our financial advisor fees. There's printing costs and things. You just can't get away from it. It's just part of the thing. And so they throw other in just around to nice even numbers. So our annual debt service, there's only a savings there of about $3,000, but over 20 years, it's $60,000. So in essence, for the same amount of cash we're paying right now, we get the Molly Ray sewer extension. If you look at it that way, that's really what we're doing. Those numbers are just too close. So this was the schedule, where we presented this earlier in June, or July 16th, when we first presented it. They... The council adopted the debt authorization on July 28th. We sent the project finance application in. I think we had it done by eight-five or eight-six, pretty quick. And right now, next week, we'll have the WIFA board meeting. And at this point, they just sort of bless it. We're just on their packet. I'm gonna be down there with Mark Reed, our financial advisor. On November 10th, that's when the loan documents come to council. So that's when the decision has to be made, yea or nay, on this project. And then we're gonna close as quickly as we can after that. We're gonna watch the market. If we know rates are... You know, it's a good week. We'll just jump on it and get it. But we're gonna close no later than December 1st of 2015.
Joe, is there a way you can pre-run the numbers and say, "If it's up to 2.5, it's a wash. 2.6, it's a bad idea," or whatever? That way, as we're going into it, as we're watching the rates tick up, which we've already seen since we made our darn last loan.
Yeah.
That way, we've got ready to go.
You'll know that barometer. Yeah, I can do that. I can run that whole scenario. It's actually pretty simple. So, and that's all I have.
Joe, can you explain the fact that if we close the loan, doesn't it mean we not keep borrowing the money at that moment in time?
That's correct.
After years... You have another two years after we close the loan, actually spending my pay for it, without hit or anything?
Right, yeah.
Is that all the money or a portion?
Well, the USDA money... The USDA loans will be paid off right away. But they'll be at a lower interest rate. The construction portion, WIFA reimburses this after the construction is done. So the reality is, is we have two years to do the project. If we don't do it in two years, we can ask for at least a one-year extension. And at that time, you know, we could probably... We shouldn't do this with WIFA, but there... You know, there could be the scenario where we decide not to do the project at all, and WIFA can de-obligate the money. I mean, that wouldn't be a good thing because we're gonna be borrowing from WIFA in the future for other things, and they'd be like, "Yeah, yeah, right. You just wanted to refinance it."
And this money... And this money, this $570,000 is for that project?
Just for that project, yeah.
Nothing else? We can't use it for anything else?
No. We'd have to qualify... We'd have to resubmit all the engineering on plans and everything that we've done to do that.
I have a question. Okay, so just to clarify, the USDA loan is not part of this package? We're just showing that for comparisons? Or does it get to become part of the package because we're doing a new project?
We pay off the USDA loan with WIFA money, so it becomes a WIFA loan.
But you had said at one point that WIFA does not do... It has to be a new project?
Oh, right. We have to have a new project component of...
In the mix.
In the mix.
Okay.
Right. So we're borrowing enough money to pay off the USDA and get them gone.
Gotcha.
So we owe the exact same amount, and we're adding an extra $570,000.
And we're dropped by 2%.
Yeah. The interest rate on those dollars will drop significantly.
Okay.
So if it was a standalone, that would be slammed up.
So we're not only making money... We're not only getting a sewer system that's basically gonna pay for itself over time, but in the process, we're actually lowering the interest rate on our existing loan.
That's correct.
So it's almost like a win-win, right?
Right, yeah. When you push all the numbers back and forth, it's almost a wash. We get a sewer system out.
Right.
So...
And a lower interest rate.
Add a lower... Right. So we... And those dollars saved over time.
Okay.
And then, as you said, there's a time sensitive component because the interest rates are ticking up.
Yeah, that's the only thing. And honestly, we thought they would be up already, but, you know, the way the Fed is. And the Fed... If the Fed raises rates in November or December, then that'll affect us. And what's by that margin may affect us, may not. It depends.
Ron, are you doing the presentation on this at all tonight, or...
I could explain the project to you. I don't have the...
I didn't know whether to...
...presentation, but I know.
Um, I am curious. Total project costs, is that just using industry standards on how we came up with that amount?
Yeah, I came up with the per-foot cost, and my group's always gonna be on the high side when I come up with this stuff. So what I actually did, we really borrowed the whole end of the project by at least 10%.
Okay. So if we're 10% under that, puts it at, you know, $57,000, so we'll still be over our 500, which is required? Yes.
Yeah, they did the same exactly. Five hundred percent. You basically... And they... So to make a proper question, if you have $57,000, you're just gonna be obligated to lower it or less.
Right, okay.
And they emphasize a little bit, exactly.
And then at that point, when we go through the standard bidding practice?
Yeah, because this is WIFA dollars, we don't have the ability to even start to construct this with an alternate method, like, you know, in-house or anything. This has to go up to formal design, formal bidding processes. We have to work to a low bid, and WIFA will come up and actually audit our entire process to make sure that we've complied with all of their engineering and construction requirements.
Okay, great.
How structured are we gonna be here? Can we just ask about...
Yeah, just go ahead.
If we got an inch open, can we not put a water line next to it? Or down? No, it can't be right next to it. It's gotta be, what, three-foot separation?
Six-foot separation.
Okay, six-foot.
Between water and sewer.
Because we're 27-foot deep there, right?
Uh, we are 20... 26-foot deep at the log cabinet, so... Yet, no, you can't put water and sewer in the same trench. They've gotta be away from each other.
The can be shelved?
No. You've gotta be in a separate trench, up and away. Three-foot vertical, six-foot horizontal separation between the two. So I suppose if you were to shelve... If you were to shelve it, that would be fine, but you're not dealing with a 10-, 12-foot wide trench instead of just a two-foot wide trench.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be huge. It would be a massive excavation.
You're thinking you got the road tore up, you're gonna ditch.
Well, on top of it is, there's no water line there. You'd have to...
It's about a future.
Yeah. Oh.
You're...
Yeah.
If I could jump in, I think that the Prescott system runs out center there and serves...
Actually, in that way, in many, it comes down Road 1 West and then comes back. It ties into the Prescott... And then it goes over to Molly Ray. It ties into the Prescott system, the Road 2 South. The Road 1 South, I'm sorry, Road 1 South, which is the southern edge of Molly Ray. So they actually have two connections to Molly Ray. One on Center Street and one on Road 1 South. So the Prescott acquisition is what will take care of that water line. So...
So the problem... How is Molly Ray's water service supplied?
City of Prescott.
City of Prescott, all right.
And through the acquisition of the Prescott system, they'll see that 42% rate decrease. 30% surcharge, 12%, you know, rates.
Okay.
So they'll see that decrease if Prescott actually ever gives us the nod.
Yeah. Just for the rest of the council's benefit, Mr. Gritman and I have had that discussion several times. I hate tearing up a road and not laying both lines in it. I'd like to do a gas line, too, and just have all three down there, but we can't pull it off, so...
Yeah, it just... It just doesn't work like that. Even if we were doing a water project, I would still dig two trenches because you're not gonna open up that much excavation. You know, the cost is in the trench, and building two... Two-foot wide trenches versus one 10-foot wide trench, it'd be a whole lot cheaper to do the two 2-foot wide trenches.
Okay.
So even in the rural world, you still don't build like that.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, now, I know that you and I talked about the 26, 6-foot-deep trench. My concern is, is I know that part of the equation here is the people hooking on. Are they gonna have to hook down deep to a 26-foot depth?
No. When we do a service connection on a pipe that deep, it comes up at a 45-degree angle until you get to about a four- or five-foot depth, and then it runs over to the property lines. Included in the project will be, whether anybody ties into it or not, whether council waves it, we are going to stub out to the property lines at all the properties. So anytime in the future when they ever do it, you don't have to come into the road.
Their tap is right there.
Their tap will be right there.
Do you know why they haven't decided to go with lift stations and just keep the elevation equal?
Yeah.
Sorry?
As... No, that's quite all right. I am an engineer through and through. I am not a fan of lift stations at all. They are energy problems, they're odor problems, they're maintenance problems. If you ever wanna see it actual... Well, we're gonna do a presentation coming up on some of the issues with the wastewater treatment plant at some point here. Wastewater systems deal with rags. I have actually seen a 10-foot-long 2x4 show up in the bar screens at the Wildcat Hills Wastewater Treatment Plant Flagstaff. How it got through the system, I got no idea, but it ended up in there. And when you have a lift station, and all those tennis shoes and women's clothing products and everything else that ends up in the sewer system, it has to be ground up and dealt with at the lift station, and it becomes an enormous problem. The other thing is, you have a whole...
Well, poo.
And it tends to be rather aromatic. You know, they're not... They're not... They're not pleasant things to just go and stand around and have a hamburger at.
No matter how good the sewer treatment plant is working, it still isn't someplace where you wanna sit down and have your lunch right now.
No, no.
Do you know if the residents are gonna be required to put injector pumps on their systems?
No, 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 no. No, we are so deep, there's no way that anybody will ever have to put them.
They won't have to? Just gravity flow all the way?
Yeah, it'll all gravity flow out to our system, yes.
Okay.
And last but not least, as far as lift stations are concerned, because of the electrical usage...
Component, yeah.
Uh, I believe it was Camp Verde that had like six lift stations, and it was killing them.
Okay. Well, and I think City of Prescott has a lot of... I think that's how they designed their systems.
Prescott has a ton of lift stations.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, they do work. I can design a lift station. If council says that's where we're gonna go, we'll give you the best lift station that you have. give you the best lift station that you have. But it will, or the best lift station that you can build. But there will be electrical costs, monthly fees, and those are the gifts to keep on giving. Every single month, you got to write out that check to APS. APS loves lift stations, absolutely loves them, because they are.
They make money.
They make a ton of money off of them.
Well, I think the bigger concern I had was these residents having to go down to that depth level because they would have been having to do.
No.
The service line of excavators, it would have been astronaut.
There's no way anybody could even reach that deep, no. And that's what I'm saying, we come up at a 45-degree angle to a reasonable depth, about four to five feet, and then we'll run at the quarter-inch per foot, which is the required
And the tap is there, so they'll be good.
Yes, yep. And we'll actually sink a piece of rebar down, so you can always find it in the future with a metal.
Oh, that is a great idea.
So, yep.
Those things can be hard.
We do those things just so you can always find it in the future.
Okay.
Excellent. Excellent. Any other questions for Ron right now? I guess Robert has a presentation next.
I don't have a presentation prepared for the meeting. I did want to discuss the mandatory connection policy. If we propose to run service down Center Street to serve the neighborhood. As indicated on the map before you, there is a subset of residences there that are currently existing. It's found on the town codes.
It's Chapter 51.
And it's a, I think the practice has been 400 feet to the septic tank or form a service for the septic.
The way that the current policy is written, it's 400 feet to the property line. And as I've said before, we're working with the attorneys over the last couple of years to get those things rewritten. And as I've explained to you before, if you have a long, skinny lot, your home can be set 700 feet back, but if your property line, the way it's currently written, is within 400 feet, you'd be required to tie onto it. And we realize the application of that policy, that is going to be very, very problematic in Chino Valley. So we have started the interpretation of saying it's 400 feet to your septic system, and therefore, if your house is set way back, you would never be required to tie on. There's actually a homeowner on Center Street that this exactly, exact thing happened, and they were not required to tie onto the sewer line because the 400-foot was exceeded. And I should tell you, the 400-foot is not a random P, or it's not a random number. ADEQ sets that 400-foot limit. If a home is within 400 feet, then they have to either tie on, they have to tie on if it's within 400 feet, and the cost of tying on is within one and a half times the cost of building a septic system. So DEQ, that is a standard within ADEQ, so.
But Ron, that's for a new system, correct?
That is for a new system, yes.
That's new. So if you build a new house, there's a sewer line available to them, then if it's not one and a half times, they have to go against.
Yes.
That is a separate issue from an existing home.
No, but I just want to say that the 400-foot distance, though, is not an arbitrary number. That is a DEQ certified number. That's where it comes from.
We have, we are in the middle of proposing amendments to Chapter 51. Phyllis and Ron have been working on that for quite some time now. It's a fairly complicated section. We will be bringing draft materials for you to consider soon. For the purposes of this project, given the timeline and the interest rate issue, and making the decision whether or not to finance it, we were looking at the homes that are out there. There's been some concern expressed about existing homes being forced to connect and creating a financial burden on the existing homeowner that may not be tolerable for them. And so, in contemplating the project, we wanted to talk to council about whether or not there might be a discount, whether or not there might be a waiver for existing residential. I'm not talking about commercial or industrial, just existing residential. And I think there's, is it 28 residential units? Twenty, there are 28 residential units. Council, there's several sides to this. If you, if you force those homeowners to convert and mandate the connections, there's a connection fee of $6,000 per sewer. There's the cost to the homeowner for the yard line to get from the house out to the tap. It's not a cheap thing.
And then the cost of septic tank abandonment?
Yes.
So that will be included.
So it's a significant amount, even if we amortize the connection fee of $6,000 over a 10-year period, it's still a significant amount of money for the homeowner. If we provide a waiver to the existing residences that are there, that may give them time to get full utility out of their septic systems. And when their septic systems do fail, there's a choice between whether or not they refurbish that or they connect. And then there's middle ground. Do you provide them with an incentive? Do you say to the homeowners, while we're under construction with this sewer extension, we would entertain connections at half-price? Or whatever discount council may, may entertain. The last thing I would say is, if council intends to provide a complete waiver and to say that connections would be free, or if council was to provide a discount for the connection fee, I would suggest that council contemplate the town putting up the funds to make up the difference. So, for example, if it was $6,000 for a connection fee, and you decided to offer a discount of 50%, and the homeowner was going to pay $3,000 to connect the sewer, my suggestion would be that $3,000 be included in the project cost to offset that connection. The rest of the users in the system should not have to support the discounts that are provided to the existing homeowners that are connecting to the system. And so you would drive the project cost up by whatever the discount amount is that you would be offering those new customers. As far as the town is concerned, you're taking it out of one pants pocket and putting it into the other.
Can I interrupt just one second? How is the WIFSA loan paid? The money comes from what?
And money comes from the cost savings and interest that we're currently paying to USDA. So the council's in a very unique position right here. Whatever you choose to do on the Center Street sewer, as far as policy goes, has no bearing on the town's ability to repay the project.
Okay. So our total loan package, that is paid through the sewer.
Funds.
Funds, yeah. Okay. It's not a general fund, don't, sort of, right?
But if we, if we said, okay, we're going to subsidize this, we can subsidize it from the general fund. We can look at the capital, we can, and the sewer enterprise, now, we can buy down, we can borrow, we can take it off, we can borrow less, and we can subsidize it. But like Robert said, we're just taking the money.
And the reason I interrupted you there, because I want to know who's, who's paying this, you know?
And the suggestion for the project cost covering the discount would be to preclude existing system users from saying, you're only charging that guy half-price to connect, and you're taking that out of my pocket. I'm paying these bills every month, and I didn't get a discount, why should this person get a discount? And if we look at it as if it's a project cost, much like when Chino Meadows was installed, and the connections in Chino Meadows were handled through the town, then there's more of a social equity to that concept than just providing the straight discount and not covering it. But in, at the bitter end of it all, the discount gets covered by the town. It comes out of the town's pants pocket, whether it's the general fund or the sewer fund. So you're literally moving money from one, one area to another.
But the difference is that if it's, if it's covered out of the general fund, then the community has a whole piece for it. Everyone in Chino pays.
There's your sales tax.
Okay, rather than putting it just on the folks that are on the sewer system at current time.
Was it not true that Chino Meadows only paid $1,200 connection fee?
Um, that's about right. The rest was 1,400. That was where it started at.
Excuse me?
That was 1,400. And I should, because historically, up until when we, when we, well, historically, the town had a bifurcated buy-in fee, and it was, it was predicated on the date when your home was constructed, and that magic date was August 21st of 2004. If you were home prior to that, an existing home prior to August 21st of 2004, your buy-in fee was $1,400. I think after we accounted for adjustment, it ended up about $1,600, $1,700, somewhere in there. And then if you were home after that, your buy-in fee was right at 50, just under $6,000. And so what the council did is did away with that bifurcated buy-in fee, and it's just one number now. You certainly could look at the rationale, going back to that bifurcated system again, and you could continue to use that August 21st, 2004 date. It, it, it was how this town was set up initially, when they built the sewer system. It had that two-tier system.
I got to throw in just a little bit of humor. My, my home missed the cutoff by about six months, so I ended up with the $6,000. I thought, hum, hum, hum.
You know, I don't have any heartburn with the loan. I don't have any heartburn with extending the sewer. But my heartburn comes in as if I build somebody a house, they pay me to build their house, they don't have to pay me to use it. And I feel that that's kind of what we're doing, we're making people, the $6,000 that we're charging for hookup fee is to pay for what?
In a, in a normal sewer system, well, in short, the $6,000 covers the cost of putting the pipe in the street.
Okay, but that's already handled with the loan, right?
That's right.
Okay.
In a normal community, which Chino Valley has demonstrated itself not to be, but as a normal community, the, the cost of putting the pipe in the ground is covered by that buy-in fee, so that your monthly fee only covers the cost of the treatment. You know, that's all it covers. For Chino Valley, all that USDA debt and everything that you saw up there, the buy-in fees that we collected were never enough in order to service the debt. So what you had to do was you had to increase your monthly fee as a portion of not just treating the waste, but as a portion of servicing the debt it costs to borrow to put the sewer pipe in the ground.
And I understand that.
Which is why our, our monthly fee is $64. I mean, it's a horrendous fee. It's terribly high. A normal cost would be 25, 30 bucks, is all the cost. And that's what you're saying is, you know, I, I build you the house, but I don't charge you to live in it.
Correct.
You know, well, but APS charges you to use their electricity to live in it.
Well, they charge me to remind you to my house, which just checks me.
Okay. Well, they do, yep, they do.
I know they do, but that don't mean I have to like it or accept it. Well, I think that this is a little unique.
This is a very unique position we're in.
Because of the Center Street thing is already, basically, you see the pipe is already being paid for.
Yep. That's why if council chose to, and I know it doesn't fit with the mayor's initial opening statements, but if the council chose to waive the buy-in fees in their entirety and not fund them out of general fund, the project still works. Still, the project still makes sense. So you're just in this unique position of, do you do it one time on this one unique case, or do you set a new policy on how we're going to do this in the future? That's entirely with the council's decision.
One second, I'm going to go with my flow before I forget it. Suzie, what did it cost? What did you come up with the price for that?
Um, he's, you know, Ron's really, Ron's really close if you don't have to go with, if you do not have to do the injection pump. And you have, you know, the pumping of the tank is about 500. You have a backflow preventer at the house that has to be installed, demolition of the tank, installation of about 400 feet of that. He had it at about 1,800. I mean, it came in right close. The complications get if there's landscaping, if there's fencing. That, those are all the things that start, you know, kind of chiseling away. I had a question. Did you, the re-clean, reclaim water, is that, do I have the right terminology?
Reclaim water is.
Recharge water?
Yes.
Was that factored into your numbers, Joe, the number, the, because we're going to make money on recharge water as well, right?
You only make money when you sell that water back to a developer. We are recharging that water now that it becomes a class of water called ethylene water that the Department of Water Resources gives us credit for.
Okay.
And you only make money when you charge that or when you sell that to a developer.
Okay.
And today, well, actually, because of other agreements that the town has in place, virtually all of our ethylene water is tied up in Bright Stars and Del Rio and other agreements that we have currently in place.
Okay.
So we don't really have.
So you don't really, aren't going to make much there?
We don't have extra water to sell.
Well, I guess the other factor that I consider with Chino Meadows, who had to do a mandatory hookup, and they were not given any.
No choice.
They were not given any discounts, right? So, you know, do we look at that, too, when we're considering this? The fact that.
Long-term, there's only. Well, I've heard a lot of questions that maybe we can get a few answers to. I've spent quite a bit of time on this, and Jack, I'm with you. My, my whole issue with the sewer system has been if a person has lived in their home in this community for X amount of years, just because the sewer line goes past, we should not burden them with any kind of mandatory, you know, it just isn't fair in my mind. So then, we come up with, okay, what are our choices then? How do we pay for it if we don't do that? Going back to the sewer hookup, the $1,400, I think that's what's been done in the past. I believe that that pretty much negates what Robert has said as far as people coming and saying, "Well, I didn't get a discount," because no existing homeowner in this community has ever paid any more than that 14 or 16 or whatever it is. A new home has, but not an existing, correct?
Well, I mean, after we did away with the bifurcated system, and our bifurcated buy-in fee went to a $6,000 flat rate, there've been a few people who had to pay that full $6,000.
Like the mayor.
It's not been a lot.
Like the mayor.
It's not been a lot. No, 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 no. The mayor's connection happened back in '06 or '07, and that would have been at a lower rate.
Okay, so we do have a few that are there, and?
Now, I don't know when your home was built. Was your home considered pre-2004 or after 2004?
It was after, because I.
So you paid the higher of those two connections?
Paid the higher of the two, yeah.
Okay. So it was like $4,800, $4,900 is what that, that one would have been at that moment in time, yeah.
Why did Chino Meadows pay? Did they pay $6,000?
No. Chino Meadows paid 14, at the time that we did the Chino Meadows project, we completed the Chino Meadows project in October of 2008. We didn't go to this single buy-in fee until '10 or '11, maybe even '12, or '13? '13. So it was just two years ago that we went to this. So there was a long period of time in there where we were living with this bifurcated buy-in fee that we had. Virtually all the homes in Chino Meadows, except those who were built after August 21st, 2004, paid the 14, it ended up being about 1,683 is where the, the, just accounting for regular inflation costs in that. It ended up, it goes up every year. It's tied to the engineering news record is what it's tied to, the interest rates and stuff. It's a big equation that we run it through. It's a cost of living adjustment.
So, so this, this amount that you arrive at is determined by the price of the pipe?
Yes.
Okay, so when you're, when you're in a smaller density area, or a medium-density area where you have lots that are closer together, they should be paying less to hook in than a 5A?
Let me finish, let me finish what I was going to say, because I think, I'm serious, I think I can answer a lot of questions that are coming up with this. First of all, just to answer that question, the $6,000 came when we had, we paid to have a study done on how does, how do we make it work in the town of Chino Valley to extend sewer lines? We paid somebody an engineering fee to figure all this out and come to us with this. He said, "If you charge everybody $6,000, you can make it work." So that's where that number came from.
Yeah.
And the $6,000 could be, or is a realistic number, but the ethical idea of mandatory for an existing home is another situation. So we have to figure out how we want to make that work. To me, to me, this is a special project. We didn't get here through the front door. You know, we do a refi that makes sense. In order to do the refi that makes sense, we have to do another project. So, staff looks at this project. So staff looks at this project and says, "Hey, this makes sense. We've got a development out here that put in dry sewer. They're ready. They're ready to hook up sewer and then everybody that builds a house is on our sewer system. We're looking for more users. The whole thing makes sense." But we've got these people that are in existing homes. So I'm not really, you know, I don't know that I'm in favor of giving the hookups away. Now, we may decide to do a discount because it is, it is good for the town. We have more people on the sewer as far as the affluent and so on and so forth. Even if it's all accounted for already, it still goes against that burden. Okay, so it's something that we, you know, that is good for the town down, down the road. But in my opinion, the mandatory hookup should be waived. I think even if we don't get there before we decide on this project, we need to sit down and look at the whole town as far as what we are gonna do in the future. I don't know if we'll get that done before this project, before we have to make up our mind on this project or not. But this is, like I said, a unique project. My feeling is, in all the work that I've done on it and looked at it, is that we don't do a mandatory. The decision is, what do we charge them for hookup if they wanna hook up right now? You know, if we, if we wanna give them a, an incentive. If we wanna say, "Hey, it's three grand. If you do it while we got the ditches open. Otherwise, if you choose to do it down the road, it's $6,000, like everybody else."
That's, that's pretty much where I'm at, is that I, I wanna fight against the concept of a mandatory hookup with everything in my being. If we have to do it, we have to do it, but I don't think we have to do it. I think as the pipe goes down past their place, you tell them, like Ron said, three grand or four, two grand or one grand, whatever. While the ditch is open, limited time offer, you can hook in and you get a discount. If you don't wanna hook in and later on you die and your kids wanna tie the sewer system to your house, or they, you die and your kids wanna put a set of apartments on your house, then they tie into the sewer system, but they pay the full six grand then. And I think that's only fair. I think while the ditch is open, you get that, you give them that opportunity, but boy, I'm just not good with a mandatory hookup.
What about if they have septic system failure? Septic system failure. Do we issue a permit to allow them or at that point, do you now?
Then you go back to what he was talking about before with the DEQ, is that depending on what their system failure is, if it's going to cost them one and a half times, right?
That's right.
If it's gonna cost them within one and a half times of what the sewer hookup costs-
And they're within 400 feet. And they are within 400 feet.
And they're within 400 feet, then they have to hook up to the sewer.
Now, now the town does not issue any septic permits.
Right.
That goes to the county. So the county is the one who's gonna have to be the one to kind of be the enforcer of that.
Is, is there, the town, the town doesn't review septic permits at all?
Not involved in the, nope. Not involved at all.
Go ahead and ask your question.
I would-
Okay. My other, has, have these options been presented to council as far as by us now choosing, do something different than what was done in the Chino Meadows area? Is there gonna be any, if we're giving something away now that we didn't to them, do they have any kind of legal recourse?
Legal recourse? I think I understand. If you, as a council, decided on the terms of how you would like this project to move forward, your, your next move would be to pass a resolution to declare how you want this project to move forward. You have the ability to waive rules, you have the ability to identify this as a special project and to set different terms than what's in your existing code. You can do that.
Because basically, Chino Meadows have been paying for the system-
Right.
-to this point. Now we're just gonna jump in and use what you guys have already paid for? Do they have a claim on it?
No, sir. Under the normal course of events, you would have a large subdivision come and develop like Molly Ray did, and you would have dealt with the sewer line extension issue at the time that you dealt with the subdivision. And you would've settled all that out. Unfortunately, that didn't get done with Molly Ray. And if you leave it unsued, you're gonna wind it with septic tanks in a system where you require them to put in gravity. So you have lots of rational nexus to address this under separate terms and to try and strive for the best social equity you can get so that you don't hurt people in fixing the problem.
I just don't wanna spend a whole lot of time and then have this, you know, go to the attorneys and they say, "Oh, no, you can't do that." Actually, we do have that.
We would not bring something to you that the attorneys would not support.
Okay. And if I can clarify a little bit, Molly Ray is a one-acre lot development. Under our current development standards, Molly Ray was not required to put in the sewer. The developer chose to put in the sewer because he saw that as a better soluble product with Prescott water in the sewer. But if they came in with a one-acre lot subdivision, and under our current standards, they can do wells and septic systems like every other subdivision in Chino Valley has done. Molly Ray just chose to do something different. They were not required to do it.
One thing that, in my introduction, and I'm still hopeful that we can come up with something wide enough language where we say, if, as the, upon the advance of a sewer line, if it is paid for by a grant or a refinance or a developer paying for that line, we will offer that same thing. $3,000 as the pipe is open or the trench is open, $6,000 when it closes. No mandatory. I'm thinking we might be able to do something like that where, because I know when I first ran for office, that was, that was one of the things that, that put the town into a gridlock was no, absolutely no sewer line is coming near my home. If, if we can run the center street and it's no grief to folks, and if somebody comes in and behind Walgreens, those big lots out there, wants to run a line out there and it's the same thing, you know, three and six, then we're gonna be picking up customers. The people in the town will see that we're not out to burn them to the ground. I know, I would really have a hemorrhage if somebody ran a sewer line in front of my place and said, "Off of six grand." Six grand just to hook up, plus I still have to do all the yard work and all of that. So probably at the end of the day, eight grand or so to eight or nine grand to do the whole shooting match. And if I've got a perfectly good septic tank, I'm gonna have a heartburn with it. So I think this is, if we can do something that's fairly comprehensive, that's pretty much all that we'll see in the near future. I don't see us having enough capital money to start moving a sewer line down a street where there's no end to it. Not, not in the near future.
Well, as, you've heard Joe and I and Robert talk a lot about getting the utility systems into the black, cause they've been running the red for a long, long time. And sewer is now barely floating, you know, above board, so they're right at zero now. So we're heading into the black. Other things that we do like septic and so on, we'll continue that realm. The acquisition of the Prescott system, which hasn't been done yet, will also get the water into the black. It gives the council a unique position because you've dealt with the hemorrhaging of monies. You can enact the very policy that you're talking about, Mayor. And not let it be a town-driven project where you need those buy-in fees in order to repay the debt that the town go out and borrow for that. If a developer extends it, you get the same thing as what we're dealing with right here. It's no cost to the town, it's no cost. It does set you up for that policy for it, and it could be applicable, but you had to get it so that the water and sewer systems are at least out of the red first before you have the luxury of looking at that policy change.
Right.
And we're almost there, predicated on the Prescott acquisition.
Yeah. If, I think, I think if, like I said, if we write it broadly enough, and then for this one, like Robert said, finance it, what few people, we have what, 28 folks? I'd be surprised if 10 of them wanted to buy in. And if 10 of them wanna buy in, then great. We're out a couple of bucks as far as the town is concerned, but we've shown the whole rest of the town that we're not gonna come in with the jack boots and kick down your door and force you to hook up to the sewer. That's huge. That's why we got all these discounts is because we're a poor community and, anyway.
Well, and the thing is, if you, like we saw down on Granite, you know, when that, when we were looking at the KOA, the argument to run a sewer line where engineering said was the best place to run it, was that those people were afraid they were gonna have to hook up to it. So anytime, whether there's a development gonna build, if that mandatory hookup is there, whoever is on that street is gonna be in there screaming and hollering, "No, no, no, we don't want it." Because it's gonna cost them money. So we have to fix that also, so that when, when somebody does wanna come in and do a subdivision, and they do, they're, they're good, they wanna have sewer, that we don't, we don't automatically gig every current homeowner on that street.
So I agree, and I think it's important that we do get our sewage treatable more than putting our sewage water into the house in the ground.
Right.
But I think it's a better deal. I don't like it much again, but I think if I had to do it, I would do it. But I don't think $8,600 worth of, to hook up is fair to somebody that's been living there that didn't choose for the sewer to go down that street.
What does a normal sewer replacement of leach lines cost roughly? Any idea?
Well, he has it at $4,000, and I said it was pretty darn close. I mean, Greg and I penciled it out last night, and a little bit lower maybe, but you're gonna be looking at-
My numbers will always be on the high side.
It was good, it was good. I thought it was-
My numbers will always be on the high side, so-
$4,000 for the complete, for just the leach line?
Oh, no, for a leach line. Where we're-
No, I'm trying to, to do an average-
You don't have to replace the tank.
An average price?
Right.
What's the most common problem a septic system has?
Tree roots.
Leach lines?
Yeah. Tree roots in the leach lines.
Okay.
Generally, your tank is fine. You do have to go through a permit process with the county whenever you replace leach line. You can replace tank, but you can't replace leach line. So once again, you're looking at landscaping comes down, fences come down, it's mess. And so, you know, it, you know, depending on the size of the home, how many bedrooms it is, if it has a, the garbage disposal determines your, and the percrate, which we're in an area right there that has a good percrate. That's what determines your leach line size.
About four grand.
About four grand. When you're looking at a whole-
I have a septic tank with the tank and everything, brand spanking new, it's zero from eight to 10, somewhere in there.
I would then think six.
If I had a septic system and there's, I had a sewer line in front of my place and my sewer system fails, what's it gonna cost me to either fix what I've got or hook up to the city and never have to deal with it again? I would, I would opt for the city.
Now, again, DEQ will step in at that point. You have an existing tank, and you have a failed system, and you go to the county and say, "I want a new leach line." The county will say, "The cost of your leach line, if it's $4,000, you have one and a half times, so $6,000. If it's cost you $6,000 or less to tie into the-"
So whenever there is a failure, it's mandatory.
Now, the town isn't in control of this, so if the county misses something, you know, we have no recourse against them. We have no authority over them. But it is administered to the county.
One concern I have though with the, and I know that, you know, we're on a timeframe with this and understand that, and I too am not in favor of mandatory hookups at all. But I think we lose some credibility when we, kind of all over the place with what we charge for things. And I think that, as much as maybe we don't have the time to do an in-depth study of what we want, where we wanna go with this, the charges, there's still this part of me that wants us to come to a decision on how much to charge on this because this is a, they're watching us, they're watching what's gonna happen with this. It's so important.
And then we do, we do have that time. I checked with Ron, you know, and asked about, once we decide to do this, how long do we have?
Yeah, we do hear that.
We're looking, you know, we've got plenty of time to have more study sessions and boil this thing down and make that decision before we ever start this project.
Okay.
And I like that because as I've told our council before, today's solution is oftentimes tomorrow's problem. I don't want that.
Right, right.
I would like to have something that covers developers coming in, something that covers a refinance or a grant or whatever. Have that all balled up and then have another price or another part of the ordinance that deals with, okay, now we're in the black and we wanna continue out Road 4 North or whatever. Now, we wanna do that and so as it comes by your house, what do we, what do we do there? If we had to sign the papers and start the trench tomorrow, we'd have to do some fly-by-night thing and the people of the town would beat us to death over it. What do you mean charging us this or whatever? I, I think when we walk away tonight, at least we're a little bit better informed. At least we have something to work with when we sign the papers, we get the loan. We know that we wanna do this inside two years, but I'd like to have something hammered out that we can work with.
Listen, I understand that we don't pay any interest on that money-
Oh, wow.
Until we draw a blank.
Okay.
So we apologize for all of that.
Okay.
You take a year and one month and you pay us security back.
Good, excuse me, it's not a line of credit. It's not a credit. And to give you an idea, it'll take from the time that we sign the engineering contracts, it'll be about nine months from that time until we're done with the project. So if we've got two years, we have to be done, you can back up. You guys have 15 months to decide what you wanna do before we start coming into a crunch as far as we can finish the project within the two-year period.
Well, given, given this council, I don't think we're gonna take nine months.
I agree.
I, I think, I think we can take from tonight, get some bullet points together, be thinking, you know, well, what about the little lady that's on social security that, you know, roll all these scenarios through your head and, and we'll take the bullet points from tonight. We'll have something to work with when we come back the next time we can get some numbers.
Two more questions, I think, there's Ron. Number one is, I was told, and I don't know if it's true or not, that when they did the mandatory hookup in Chino Meadows, that-
All the rumors in Chino Valley are all true, so if you've been told, I'm sure that it's true.
That Fan actually decommissioned your tank and hooked you up?
That was included with the project, yes. We included, in the project, Fan was the contractor, but what included in the project was the yard line itself, the decommissioning of your tank, and all that was rolled into the project cost.
Right. And then the second thing is, is that people could roll their hookup fee, that $1,200, when it was in, into a-
It was $1,400.
I'm sorry, I keep on saying $1,200.
That's okay, but, and you can amortize it for a 10-year period, 120 payments. And there's a nominal interest fee that we charge for that, I don't know, it's like 3% or so.
How much was it?
It's like 3%. If you, if you choose to amortize it, we do charge a nominal interest rate for that.
Well, you should.
And so, but yes, you could amortize it over a 10-year period, yes. That was available to everybody over in Chino Meadows. It's actually available to everybody. Anybody on our system, not just Chino Meadows, can amortize their buy-in fee if they choose to. Anybody can.
Any other thoughts? Okay, this, like I said, I've tried to get some bullet points from this and will we be able, would I be able to give a CD of this after a bit? No.
I have to download it on Monday, put it up on YouTube, copy it, do all the stuff I need.
Don't worry, I'll watch it on the tube.
Well, it'll, it'll probably take me a little longer because it's an unusual-
Oh, okay.
Like, me taking all these, so either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay.
But there will be, at that time, there will be a copy also available for the library. That's what I hope you check that out.
Easy enough. I can probably just watch it. Easy enough, I can probably just watch it. I'll try and get some bullet points together. Everyone will sit back down again, we'll have a plane. I'm not hearing any, any objection about the refinancing or the actual extension of the Center Street, the Center Street extension. Right. So, therefore, we're basically good to go when this is presented to us on November tenth. That's really all that we need to agree on at this point is to accept the WEFAB takeover and the extension of the sewer line. We can deal with what we're going to do with that down the road. I hate to use that term, down the road. So, that's really all that we need to.
Except for the, if we get a discount, say, Robert, and we're going to roll general discount into the loan again?
You don't have, you don't have to do that. I was talking about, when I was talking about that was how the community of Chino Valley would perceive how council and staff are putting the project in. So, if you, if the connection fee has been six thousand dollars all this time, and council decides that it wants to provide some sort of a discount or waiver, I could, I could easily see an existing system user who has been on the system and maybe paid that six thousand dollar fee saying something similar to, "Hey, you know, I didn't get that kind of a discount, and where's all this money coming from to pay?" Because somebody's got to pay for that connection. And coming to an assumed conclusion that that money was going to come out of the rate table and all of the people that were paying for service. And so, my thoughts were, if you, you have twenty-eight homes out there, you may be lucky to have five that want to take advantage of a discount or hookup if you do the discount. And then, maybe you budget, if it's six thousand dollars a connection and you're giving them a three thousand dollar break, maybe there's fifteen, twenty thousand dollars that you're throwing at this project to cover those discounts. And as Joe said, if you take those funds out of the general fund, the source of the general funds is largely retail sales tax. And so, the source of that payback would come from everybody in Chino Valley or the people who come through here and spend money.
And just not to interrupt, but you hit on a real good point. If we get out ahead of it, rather than letting folks say, "Well, I'm sure that's coming out of my sewer bill," that, you know how that goes, okay? So, it's better to be out ahead of it and say, "We're going to, if we do discounts, it'll be X, Y, Z." And when is our, our meeting with the residents? I think we're going to invite the residents in this.
Twenty-eighth. On this, is it twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth of November.
Yeah.
No.
No, it's October.
October.
Two weeks from tonight.
Okay, okay.
Or tomorrow, two weeks.
And we may want to, we may want to reschedule and have one or more study sessions before we invite them.
Yeah, and, because that was the whole purpose of doing this, was to, to have a plan, to come up with something that we figured will work. And then, and be able to tell all those people that are on Center Street exactly how we've got this laid out so that they know ahead of time and they don't get a surprise once the backhoe starts digging.
Right.
You know, we want all of them to know what the plan is and what's going on and what they can expect and what their options are before we start digging trenches so that we don't get, well, my neighbor Sam told me.
Yeah.
You know, everybody knows. So, that's, that's the idea of, once we get this hashed out, if that's what we're going to do, and I hadn't thought about that before, but you brought it up, we have the time to do it. So, I would be in favor of that myself in, in putting off that twenty-eighth, offering the public in, give us a chance to have a couple of more. Make sure that we're all, we've got our sheet typed out and we know where we're at.
Because we will already be surprising them on November tenth that we are, we are going forward with the sewer extension. But at that point, we won't have an answer for them by then.
I think that is also a marijuana thing though, too, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's a.
Oh, it's a multiple thing?
Two things.
Okay, so.
So, and, and we may still want to, you know, go over some bullet points and kick it around. I'm just saying, let's not invite in the whole neighborhood to see us go, "Well, we're not sure what we want to do."
I had, I'm sorry, I have one more, I have one more question.
No.
The Molly Ray subdivision, the one concern about delaying this process a little bit is the developers, are we in contact with the developer if anyone's pulling permits on house, on new construction? That they're aware that they are going to have to be setting up for a sewer system that's coming? But what if we don't quite get there in time? How is that going to work? And I know there's four existing houses, but I'm talking about new construction.
Well, once we get the sewer line in place, you'll never see another septic system up in Molly Ray.
Right. My concern is this lag time.
No, and if we end up delaying thirteen months or fifteen months before we even start the project, you may take those four homes, and there may be fourteen homes in there.
I know.
And those are the ones that you're foregoing during this delay time.
Okay.
They'll have septic.
So, they'll have septic, and we'll just have to determine whether we're going to do mandatory hookups for them.
No.
Nope.
The ones that have septic, they have acre lots, so they are perfectly legal to have septic systems if there is no sewer available. So, until the sewer is hooked up, any of those acre lots can apply for the county, with the county put in a septic system, and they can keep it forever.
But then it changes just figures.
Yes.
We've lost some.
We've lost some equity.
The developer of the Molly Ray came and spoke to the council a couple of weeks ago, a couple of sessions ago.
Okay.
And he's kind of, it sounds like holding back a bit.
Oh, good.
On trying to push, push their sales.
Okay.
Waiting, kind of waiting for a decision of what we're going to do.
Okay.
I think he's all for the.
I think they would like it, yes.
I hope I didn't give the wrong impression, like I want to wait eighteen months, make a decision. I think with this council, I think with what we've accomplished just tonight, we could probably, in one or two more study sessions, have everything knocked out. It comes before council, bang, it's a done deal, okay? And, and then, we can spend the monies, they can start rocking and rolling on the line. I just, that's why I said, you bring it out, you hammer it out in a study session, because this isn't something we can do at a council meeting. You know, at a council meeting, you've got, it's a whole different dynamic compared to a study. Are you thinking we can have that done by November tenth?
Probably February or March. I mean, if you're, if you're talking about what you're saying, Mayor, we could start the engineering work in March.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it gives you guys November, December through holidays, January, February, to answer your questions and develop your study sessions, whatever you want to do. And then we'll probably just start the project in March. So, we're only losing two, three months instead of fifteen months.
That's not like a long way to go.
Yeah, well, and it takes.
We would still have a study session on this, on the twenty-eighth. We'll still have a study session, we just will not make the public meeting. Is that correct?
It will be a public meeting, but we won't go down and invite all the mayors.
Right. Where we want to. In other words, they can, they can come if they want, but we, we are not ready to present yet.
Right.
So, the answer to your question is that it's possible.
Yeah.
It's possible that we could have a meeting, and if we thought we were really that close, we could get together the next week even or something.
Yeah.
Well, how long do we have to have? Just at a meeting, two, is it two weeks?
No. Study sessions.
Yeah, okay.
So. So, it's possible.
But, but, but the council can call a special session with just twenty-four hours' notice.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
But if you're in agreement with the A D P, you can put the.
You need better.
That's true, yeah.
Is it inappropriate for me to suggest, I don't even know if we can do this either or not, but could we not all write down the ideas that we have in our head and say, give them to you, email them to you, and you compile them?
We can do that, can we not? Better to send them to Robert.
Have to come to staff.
Okay.
Don't do it.
It's a secret. I think we could do that, Ben.
Yeah, let's write our bullet points and shoot them to Robert.
Send them to Robert.
We'll simplify it all, put it all together, get back out to you guys, so you have the work.
Well, I just think it would be a way for us to all think where everybody is without having to sit here and chew on each other's ear for a while.
You bet.
Maybe give us some time to write things out.
Yeah, by tomorrow morning, we will have thought of three more things.
I agree.
So, yeah. And then just write them all and shoot them to Robert. And, and you can make up a set of bullet points. We need to address new development, we need to address existing homes, we need to address X, Y, Z. Just one more brief thing before we close out here. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that on the new developments, yeah, one of the thoughts that I want to kick into that is no new development unless they attach to sewer. How we work that out, I don't know. But I want to get our number of sewer customers up so we can take the burden down. Anyway, any other thoughts, questions?
Just one, one quick question. I think only review this week was about the guy that wants to do the development down. He said the sewer's three miles away, which I don't agree, let's hold it two.
About two.
Is there grant money to get like a sewer truck line run down the highway?
There used to be, back in the eighties and nineties, seventies, eighties, nineties. Pretty much all the grant money has dried up for that type of, the infrastructure.
Did it, did it, was some like, state or town sewer?
No, pretty much, most of that stuff is gone. And the feds have gotten so ridiculous on how, to figure out how to give our own money back to us that Chino Valley has a problem complying with all of their requirements because rights of way are not complete. It really precludes us from even going after some federal dollars. The E D A grant, the two point, the two hundred dollars that we just got, the E D A grant, it was such a unique thing, and it was tailored specifically to what E D A is. And that's about the only reason why we've got that federal grant. But for the most part, most of the stuff is all dried up and gone.
I mean, Chino's always been behind the ball with made-line water.
Yeah. Yep. It's, it, it, it burns tears to your eyes when you think of the opportunities we've missed because we were in the other room, so.
Right.
And if there's any other? No closing thoughts, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. All right. Or should we adjourn?
Second.
All right. Adjourn. Within a half hour, whatever. But I think we ought to have a number because otherwise.